Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August fourteenth, twenty twenty five Venter City Commission meeting. Can I ask everyone to rise for the flag salute, please?
Bledge Legion.
Thank you. Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Here.
Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Kribel?
Thank you. Lisa, would you please read the open public meetings announcement?
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. Agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Would you please read the live streaming announcement?
The City of Venter offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access as a convenience to the public. In the event remote access is unavailable for any reason beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue remote access at the discretion of the city for any future meetings.
Thank you. Before we get into the main meeting, we have proclamation here honoring Saint James Roman Catholic Church. I want to also thank them on behalf of the city and, and of course, the commissioners, if they like, for helping us out during the last concert. Right? At the, at the Saint James Meeting Center, at the last minute weather dependent change. So that was a really great, great turnout, it looks like. And this is honoring the Saint James Roman Catholic Church, their one hundredth anniversary. Whereas Saint James Roman Catholic Church has served as spiritual, cultural, and community cornerstone of this residents of Venter City for the past one hundred years. And whereas since its founding in nineteen twenty five, Saint James has welcomed generations of worshippers, provided a place for prayer, faith formation, celebrations, and comfort in times of need. And whereas the church has been the beacon of faith and fellowship, offering not only religious services, but also outreach programs, charitable works, and events that have strengthened the board of the community, the bonds of the community. And whereas, over the past century, the clergy, staff, parishioners of Saint James Roman Catholic Church have worked tirelessly to live out their mission of service, compassion, and faith, making the lasting and positive impact on the lives of countless individuals. And whereas, on the one hundredth anniversary of the Saint James Roman Catholic Church, and it is a historic milestone worthy of recognition and reflects the enduring commitment, unity, and faith of its parish and community. I now, I therefore, therefore I, Tim Kribel, Mayor of the City of Venter, alongside with the Venter City Commissioners Maria Mento and Lance Langgraf, to hereby recognize and commend Saint James Roman Catholic Church on the occasion of its one hundredth anniversary and expect, express deep appreciation for a century of faith, service, moral guidance, and community spirit. So, thank you very much. A hundred years is, is, is a big deal. Back then, the city was, you know, very different and very, but in a lot of ways, the same. It was a short community, as always. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I, I think we have a nice partnership with them, as they also have with us and with the community. They have a lovely community hall that they allow people to use for various reasons, or organizations to use, and they've allowed the city to use it on certain occasions. And the farmer's market uses their property also for the market. So there's a community spirit there that I think we appreciate. And I also believe they're having a, an event to recognize.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure there'll be lots of people that went there as a school, and it's also one, from a resilient standpoint, I think it's one of our, our main meeting places with, if there's a, if there's an emergency.
Yeah, it's emergency refuge. It's, we added generators to it, so it has the ability to house people.
Right.
In an emergency state. Yeah, I mean, the church,
For example, of our partner.
Saint, Saint James is just, it's a backbone of this community. They participate in a lot of things with us. Maria already mentioned the farmer's market every Friday in the summer. Stepping up, you know, I didn't get to go to the, the indoor concert, but apparently it was fantastic. Had a whole different crowd that would normally go. They saw it inside and they, they jumped on it and I didn't, you know,
It was a packed house.
The videos I saw, everybody was up dancing, which is great. So, thank them for that and congratulations on a hundred years. That's an accomplishment.
Yeah.
A lot of churches are closing these, you know, and that's the, now that's the parish for the, the majority of the island, right? For down beach, right? It covers all the Catholic churches here.
Margate.
Margate. Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah.
It's the Holy Trinity, I think, now, right? So, sorry, I'm a Methodist, so I don't know the ins and outs of Catholic religion and churches, but they're a fantastic partner here for us here in the city and they help us when, almost whenever we need it. So, great to honor them that way.
Great. Thank you.
And there is, at two o'clock, I think they start on Friday with some events. There's some Renee Notchown's son, I think his first name is, is, I want to, I know the
Nick.
Nicholas, he's gonna sing. He's also a priest or in the process of becoming a priest. I think he was ordained this spring, I think. The day of our block party. So there is a, it starts at two o'clock, I believe, and goes into the evening and then a whole celebration for the weekend. So, encourage people to stop out.
Thank you. Thank you. So, moving forward, the following items are scheduled for action at the commission portion of the meeting. So, so now during the workshop meeting, we will be approving minutes from April twenty fourth, May eighth, May twenty second. Regular and executive. May, June thirtieth, special meeting, and July tenth, regular and executive. We have no ordinance introductions this evening, and we have no public hearing or adoptions. However, we have a pretty good list of resolutions. Twenty twenty five dash two three nine through twenty twenty five dash two six four. A lot of these are infrastructure, so I'll be kicking this over as we go down the line if you want to add any, any background to these.
Sure.
Starting with twenty twenty five dash two three nine, this is awarding Remington and Vernic for construction management services and inspection service of the Venter Avenue signal synchronization project. And not necessarily of note, but I do still get a lot of contact from the public over the speed and the traffic patterns on Atlantic Avenue. We've done some, we've done some studies on our speeding and we literally, and we actually have a very good compliance rate on Venter, on Atlantic Avenue, although it may not seem that way. On most parts of Atlantic Avenue, we are in the seventy-five to eighty percent compliant.
You were gonna say seventy-five miles an hour. I was like, that's not compliant.
No.
I've seen someone who's e-bikes go that fast.
Now, the, 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 um, the speed stop signs that we have that give you a, you know, that give your speed as you go by are also places where we can collect data. And in the month, the last month, we've had, we collected data and it was about a seventy-five percent. But okay, this signalization, I think, is something that we all, we all support. Did you want to add anything?
This is actually Venter Avenue.
Venter Avenue, I'm sorry.
So, that's all right. There's, I think later on, we talk about Atlantic Avenue. This is Venter Avenue, the project that is mostly finished.
Yeah.
Came out great. This is, Remington Vernic was doing the inspections on it and the project ran over, so there was more inspections.
I'd say.
They had delays in the pipe, the poles and things, if we recall. We were waiting for all those poles to come in. So these are additional inspection fee services for Remington Vernic. We're still within the project parameters, so we're, we're okay with that number. They are going through the final punch list of those items now.
Okay.
A lot of the punch list items will be landscape related, so we're waiting till the fall to do that. I know I've had some phone calls from some residents that, hey, my grass isn't growing. It's dirt. That's why we're waiting till the fall to do that, because it'll, it'll just die right now. So.
Okay, great. Sorry, I got the wrong.
Yeah, that's all right.
Your I'm on that, I was on that, that synchronization. I was reading that ordinance late, I think it comes up later on.
Does.
So, next is twenty twenty five dash two four zero. This is last change order numbers for the band shell.
Yep. We added some additional lighting, some dimmers to those lights, the color upgrade we did on the, the rooftop.
Top that we picked.
So we picked, of course, we picked a more expensive color. And the skirting was actually the most, the most costly. We had, when we raised it, we had to skirt it down a little bit further. So keeps folks from going underneath it and things. So,
Isaac.
Twelve thousand eight hundred dollars and seventy-one dollars. So, that's, that's the additional work there. And there's still some punch list items there, very minor items.
Yeah, yeah, some, some boards.
I was out there with Rick today and there was two ladies that must have been babysitting a group of kids and they were all just playing on it.
Yeah.
It's become a, you know, a great little spot for people to hang out.
You know, the little things like that, I think people eventually take ownership on. It was, there were some people that, you know, that might have been controversial, I think, but in the, for the majority of people, that the design, I think, has really kind of become part of our, our street, our streetscape, our, our visual landscape.
What did our mothers tell us? You can please some of the people some of the time, that whole.
That's right. So, I think it looks great.
It does. It does.
Twenty twenty five dash two four one is change order regarding Venter Gardens Plaza stormwater rehabilitation.
Yes, so that's out, Venter Gardens Plaza, which is out kind of Venter West a little bit, as you're going on the way to the school. So that is an overall decrease in the contract. We were up at over seven hundred thousand dollars. And the total now is down to six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So, we look pretty good on that project. It seems to be working a lot better than it was before. The pipes that we replaced, the conflicts that we found in the underground piping to get things to that storm pipe or the pump station at the end of Venter Gardens Plaza seems to be working. I've gotten phone calls from several residents out there.
Really?
George Ann Ross and Ken Ross, they've called a couple of times.
Great.
Saying it's working a lot better.
Really?
Still not perfect, but we're still not, we're not done. We still have a few more things to do there. Add another, we're gonna add a bigger wet well there. Some more things to make it better, so.
Tweaking it.
Tweaking it, yeah.
Twenty twenty five dash two four two is approving supplemental for agreement with New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, National Climate Solutions Grant. Can you, um, can you put some, some background on this? This is the, is this the, the?
Jim Ratawala's, yeah, it's a tree grant.
The tree grant.
Venter Avenue trees.
Okay, it's under the, that, so this is something we spoke about actually last night at the planning board briefly. We have a, we do have a tree inventory. So the, potentially, this could be a grant that helps fund, uh, street trees in the cross, across Venter Avenue and maybe even some other areas.
Please, Venter endorse it, I think.
Venter endorse it. Yep. Twenty twenty five dash two four three. This is, uh, increasing the city's public bidding threshold. This is a, this is really just a yearly record, sort of a housekeeping item, correct?
So the governor's sent out a directive in July, for July. And if you have a QPA, your new bid threshold will be fifty-three thousand.
Right.
And the quote threshold is seventy-nine fifty.
Great. Okay, keep the, keep the wheels rolling. Resolution twenty twenty five two four four is awarding a contract for city hall maintenance to Action Janitorial. They were the previous supplier and remained a low bidder. And in twenty twenty five, two four five is a refund of a peer membership to Matthew Greenberg. There's a few, uh, membership fees here, twenty twenty five, have to check that in the, it says twenty eight. Two four six is a resolution of City of Venter. This is refunding partial soccer camp fee for various reasons. That and the second one, twenty twenty five, the next one, twenty twenty five two four seven is another refund of fishing pier membership. And in Amy's court, it looks like twenty twenty five two four eight. This is third quarter taxes and grace period, correct?
Yeah.
So this is, uh, setting that grace period.
Yep, because they got the numbers later.
We got the numbers late. Right, right. Twenty twenty Oh, okay. Uh, twenty twenty five dash two four nine is authorizing green acres, open space diversion application at the Venter Community Center.
This should have been item one. No, and I'm gonna take this from you because you had, headed this up and really took the bull by the horns. This is something that, that the city has had on its back, and I'll say a monkey on its back since several prior administrations ago. And if we can get this done, this is huge.
Yeah.
Because this, this restricts us from getting any future green acres fund, funds. We don't get any more money until we resolve this. And this is when they tore down the ice rink without Green Acres approval. And, you know, you have to do swaps, you have to do all that stuff. And you put together a plan that, you know, really, if they'll accept it, I mean, this is putting it out there to them, right?
Uh, yes.
It's not finalized.
No, no.
But this is, if we can get this done, this is huge for our city, moving forward.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. It hasn't gone without a deep dive, that's for sure.
I know, Ed worked on it when he was our engineer the first time. We worked on it.
Met with them, they said this was the best meeting they've ever had with the City of Venter.
Right.
Yeah.
They felt we were seriously.
Trying. And it's taken nine years.
It's taken.
Yeah.
All sides.
On all sides.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Change and they move and they retire and then you're like starting all over again.
On their end, it was, a couple of folks retired.
Right.
And then somebody new would pick up a file, but if we can get this done, and it's really at no out of pocket cost, it's more of a land and land or money that we would have gotten.
Right.
Just turning it back to them, I guess, is that the, that's how I read it.
And I remember they released significant money to us because of the level of comfort.
Right.
First came in office. But they're still holding money that they're.
From, for the pier house.
This gets resolved.
Yeah, yeah.
So, hopefully this is a, a great step. And I didn't mean to step on your
No, no.
But I wanted to give you kudos for getting that done. I think that was.
Thanks. That makes, that makes reading the, the minutes from all the meetings a little bit better. Honestly, appreciate it. And Tom as well, thank you.
Good work by everybody there.
Twenty twenty five two five zero is accepting resignation of Juan Feliz effective July fifteenth, twenty twenty five. One of our, our officers. Twenty twenty five two five one is provisional appointment of Robert Newcomer to sewer repair from one from laborer one.
This is getting him in line to eventually get to supervisor role.
Right.
If, if I could just add to that, the, the first draft of this did not make it clear that this is also a promotion to the title of senior pumping operator. He holds two titles currently as a laborer and as a pump operator. He's getting promoted from the laborer position to the sewer repair and he's being promoted from the pump operator to a senior pumping operator.
Right. So job one and job two at the same time.
Yep.
Great.
I remember interviewing him and he was one of a few candidates.
Nope, this is, this is senior. This is senior.
This is senior.
Oh, that's not the son?
No.
Oh.
Okay.
He wouldn't have moved up that fast.
I
But he's good.
Is the sun at the pump? Here's the pump stations.
I don't think so, yeah.
Robert?
Yeah.
What you're talking about now, there's a junior now, the son, that is a summertime
Yeah.
Trash player.
I have, I have the wrong person. I completely have the wrong person.
Yeah, you, I think you have.
But you have a really good guy over there that I interviewed.
Good. It's good. We need, we need, we need good people. And we need to improve, I need to, to move, to move up when it's, when the time is right. Twenty twenty five dash two five two, this is a tax abatement agreement for nineteen South Troy. Part of our tax abatement program, as is twenty twenty five two five three. This is tax abatement for twenty-eight South Rosboro Avenue. We have a number of them here. Twenty twenty five two five four is twenty-six South Rosboro. Two five five is to North Cambridge. And twenty twenty five two five six is for nineteen North Somerset Avenue, all tax abatements, according to our program. Twenty twenty five dash two five seven is a authorizing a tax refund for an overpayment. Twenty twenty five dash two five eight is an agreement with Blackjack Construction for Repair on Swathmore Avenue, Wellington Avenue, and Burke Avenue, not to exceed eighteen thousand seven twenty. Is there anything to add to that?
Just that it's, it's a significant depression out there. That road, Swathmore Avenue was built on the old dump. So it's lasted thirty-plus years without significant issues. So we have to go back in and we're gonna, not just gonna patch the little hole, we're gonna actually take a distance on either side of it, excavate it out, find out why it's collapsing, and fix it and reconstruct that portion of the road.
Great. Great. Twenty twenty five dash two five nine is authorizing payout funds for the retirement of Joseph Daniels firefighter within the parameters. Twenty twenty five dash two six zero is, this is De Blasio Associates Professional Engineering Services for the replacement of the portion of the Venter City Boardwalk. Additional service for boardwalk lighting analysis and alternate design not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. So this is the design phase of the placement of lighting and the selection of lighting? Is that what that is?
So we got into looking at the lighting on the boardwalk and right now the lights are at thirty-five feet in height above the boardwalk. They do not meet like the minimum light you would have in a parking lot. Under our ordinance, we have, you're supposed to have point three foot candles hitting on any, on certain areas, and then you have to have an average of point five foot candles. We don't meet that requirement. There's no real standard for a boardwalk.
Right.
But Ed, and then as well as Mark De Blasio, thought we should increase the lighting there a little bit. What I didn't want to do is keep those lights at thirty-five feet and just up the wattage.
Right.
Because then it's light pollution. It's on the beach, you don't really want that there. It's glaring in the folks' windows. So, we're, what we're having them do is do a study to see if we can bring those lights down, increase the wattage, or even keep the same wattage, but maybe a couple more lights.
Right.
Instead of having on every street end, we might have one in mid-block then.
Right.
Brighten up the boardwalk just enough that it meets the minimum safety standards for a parking lot. And then you're walking there, so you want to have it that, that well lit. But again, you don't want those bright lights in people's windows because at twenty-five feet, you're right at that second floor window. So we're, that's what I'm having these guys look at.
So would it be the entire boardwalk?
Um, we would design it, well, we designed it for the new section, but that'll, we'll use, we won't have to study it for the next section, because we're gonna know what, what we're gonna do.
Right.
Once we get that study, we'll bring it to us three, then we'll decide what we want to do with those. So, that, that's the reason for the study. And it's a, it's a pretty, it's, you know, it's a mile long the boardwalk, so we're, we wanna, that's why it's, it's twenty thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, it seems like we lose a pole or two a season.
Well.
From the age of them. I mean.
It's not even the poles, it's actually the board, it's the boardwalk.
Boardwalk.
Yeah. The, the wood is, is, and the, the mounting mechanism that has been used for years.
Right.
Just fails over time, because it's in a very rough environment. So, we, we actually had horn before we got the grant to replace the whole boardwalk, replacing now, replacing the brackets. You'll see one is down, I think, I'm gonna say Swathmore right here. One is down. We're not gonna put it back up until we decide what we're gonna do. With the, that's not part of the boardwalk, it's gonna be redone, but we want to see what we're gonna do. We might put a new pole up there as we do the rest of the boardwalk.
Right.
Just to, because we won't have money for the rest of the boardwalk for a little time.
Aesthetically, we'll have the boardwalk have something going on.
Yep. The, from the pier to Jackson Avenue will be totally reconstructed from the piling underneath all the way up through new railings and everything. So no matter what, you're gonna have a new look from the pier to, to Jackson Avenue.
Railings as well.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We're gonna keep the old ones. We're, we're kind of designing the same ones.
Right.
Keep the old ones to, because people run into them.
Yeah.
With whatever.
Yeah.
So.
There's some, there, there, there's been issues from the joints in some cases.
So we, we keep the old stuff and, and we repair it.
Right.
So.
Big project.
At least at this point, I haven't seen a rail design, so
And.
we're getting ready to bid it out, so we should be finally looking at all those fine-tuned parts. And what I'm gonna, what I suggested to Ed is to have the, more lights as an alternate bid.
Right.
Get it out the way it is.
Right.
See how we, we like that bid, and then if we, if it's not too much money to add these lights.
Yeah.
Then we would do that.
All right. I don't disagree with having it well lit. It's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a walkway, so.
But not to the point where it's daylight out there.
No, no, that would be, so, I, so I'll look forward to seeing that. Wouldn't, would, just as a, as a, as an idea, what, what would the second phase happen? Is there any anticipation of that? Or is that too far and too big?
Either, well, there's, there's no more funding out from the state. I don't know that the feds are gonna be putting out any money. They've already pulled the beach funding. So I don't see that happen anytime soon. So it's gonna be up to us to come up with another, at the time, probably it'll be fifteen to twenty million dollars to do the rest.
Right.
So, we'll have to see. The worst section was that section when we looked at the piling. Would have been ideal if we could have scotched around and, you know, fixed the, the worst. But we really can't. You gotta, if you're gonna build the whole thing, you gotta do it. Take it out and, and they'll do it by section. They'll rip out a couple of block or so.
Right.
Come in and start building that as the next section is ripped out. So, over the winter, this, this project's gonna happen this winter.
Yeah.
So, we have to spend the seven and a half million from the state by December twenty twenty six. So, one of the things we did, and it was our city engineer's suggestion, was to purchase the lumber with that money first.
Right.
So we used quite a bit of that money already just to purchase the lumber and the fasteners. So, the, the E-pay, the decking.
Right.
So we purchased all that and that's actually in the
It's a contractor.
The contractor's holding it for us, yeah. We're not, we don't have a place to put, that's a lot of lumber.
Yeah.
So, and we got it in before all the pricing of all the other boardwalks being built.
Great.
So.
Great, big project, and I'm sure you'll keep us updated.
Yep.
Yep. Next are three new firefighters here. So this is a resolution twenty twenty five two six one, two six two, and two six three. We are hiring three firefighters effective September first. They'll be back for swearing in later, but Ryan Tacion, Luke Brahmi, Tason, and Nicholas, that's right, that's a and Nicholas Godera. Do you have any, any comment, chief, or you're, we, we went through a long process, a long discussion, a long, you know, interview period. One is a, one is a veteran.
Pretty motivated people. They're replacing three members that are since first one left May, and then July, and then August first.
Right.
We're refilling the ranks.
Refilling the ranks. Appreciate that. Correct. Next is twenty twenty five two six four. More, more infrastructure. This is awarding Arthur Henry deteriorating sewer worm pipe across Venter Avenue at the intersection of Austin, not to exceed forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-two. So this is more infrastructure work.
Yes, this is a collapsed stormwater pipe that crosses Venter Avenue. Probably today that flooded because the water can't get from the ocean side to the bay side where it drains out. So it's collapsed pipe, we have to repair that.
Great.
And there's some residents there that'll be pretty happy when that's done.
Right.
Floods up into their yards.
Yeah, Austin, Austin Avenue, right?
Yep.
Okay, next, then during the regular meeting, we'll have bills and payroll, we'll have discussion items and public portion. So any items that have been discussed so far, the Venter Commission welcomes participation of interested organizations or individuals during this workshop session. If you, there's anybody in the, would you like to do this discussion items now, of prior?
That's fine.
So we'll back up to item twelve. We have two discussion items. One is unfortunately longer than you might like. The PowerPoint presentation on the Dollar General and the commercial businesses, and then a revocable license. So, Jim, if you could just pop that up and we'll go through these pretty quickly, if you don't mind. I may have to log on in order to see it.
Which Dollar General?
So this is Dollar General in Venter, on Venter Avenue. I'm gonna stand up because I, I recently found out that my site is
twenty fifteen.
Right. So Dollar General is the overall message here, but it really falls under, saw, an idea that I, I think I shared with you through emails about creating a blanket exemption for local property taxes for improvement of construction and commercial industrial sites. So there's, 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 there's groundwork for this in a lot of cities. The idea is that we would create an ordinance that allows us to give a tax abatement similar to what we do in new construction, but focused on facades in two different ways. So focused on, on potentially larger, that you'll see, and then larger facade improvements. And then I would like to propose that we do something in a smaller venue for smaller store owners for, break more, more like a awning, a signage, or maintenance. And there's, there's a lot of background, and I really just wanted to set the stage by going through the city a little bit, because there's a couple of things that I think that make this the right time to do it. So, next slide? Next slide? Uh, there's a lot of sample language out there, so I'll give you all that stuff from other cities, facade appearance standards, the things that kind of, you know, the, the bureaucratic sort of descriptions of them. And, but the idea, next slide, is that we have some standards. Nothing that's really written in stone, but something that gives businesses guidelines of, of, of how much, of where signage goes, things like awnings, things like maintaining. We can even go so far as to suggest palettes of paint. I don't know that we want to go that far, but we would just want to encourage improvement because, next slide. Um, I don't know that we want to go that far, but we would just want to encourage improvement because next slide. Um, you know, this is, as I said in the past, this is our this is our handshake to anybody that wants to live or or visit Ventnor. Next slide. And it's done throughout the city. So we have in our I just want to go through some of our business to make to drive this home. Next. That there are some good, there are some very, very attractive appearances, but there's also some that I think that with a little bit of a nudge and a little bit of help from the city. We can uh keep going. Next slide. These are all, you know, very there. In a lot of ways, these are very nice. Next slide. But you can look at, this is an old one from Water Dog. It's been it's been changed. Next. Uh, next, these are all uh. Next, I just want you to feel for the our downtowns. Uh, next. There's one that maybe could use a little cleanup. Next. Um, next, you see we have a vibrant downtown during the day. Um, next slide, that's a very attractive one. Next slide. But one of the things that I think that we're missing out on also is that the tree, our tree grant will help uh our trees. We have a we have a real problem with trees in our downtown. Most most of them are are either uh dead or dying, and I think that'll also ha- uh improve. Um, next slide. A lot of the bigger companies, they take and and this development next will be uh, you know, I think will be a great um improvement to the area. Next slide. Next slide. Uh, so the Dollar General is one that caught a lot of people's eyes. It it uh it, you know, they're making an investment in this uh space. We talked to um the ownership and the corporation. Uh, I did a quick rendering of what it could look like. Next slide. Taking the across the street view and then um we uh also I want to shout out to um Shelley and the. Uh, beautification committee. It was really part of their uh encouragement that this conversation came up. Um, and then we we focused in on more of the facades rather than some murals that they had in mind. But uh, next slide. We came up with this design. Something very simple. It's a it's a it's adding some uh some uh some uh. Uh, some siding, uh, adding a beauty line across the what you call Wayne's Court area, right above those windows, right below those windows. It gives a shape more of the building itself and then and then uh some awnings and some lighting. Um, so the idea behind this is that if somebody, if a if a an ownership on this of this building makes that kind of investment in it. Uh, up to a certain level that we can decide, they would get a tax abatement on that, just like in our tax abatement for building new construction. That would be then be graduated over time to get that to get a portion of that money back, not all of it, but something like this could be fairly expensive. Um, so just go back to the other the one, go back one if you would, Jim. And then back ne- next slide, you can see it's the same or uh forward, go you can go forward to the rendering. Yeah. So um, so this really, I think, is one that we could, it would be if we have something like this, it could be a potential for uh a starting point. Uh, if you go through, uh, next slide, please. But I think all of the businesses, when they see something like this happening, um, more businesses might take part. Next slide. Uh, that building is going to be hopefully rehabbed. Next slide.
That needs to be demoed.
It does. Uh, next slide. Um, next slide. You know, um, next slide, I point pointing out some of these facades that I don't think we always look at. I think some of them are under the radar and really um even with an awning and a new coat of paint. You'd get a better and a better signage application. You might get you you'll get a better walking appearance from downtown. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. I put some nighttime. That's a it's a rough corner right there. Next slide. Um, next slide. Put some evening shots in here. Um, this one in particular uh has some uh. We may might even want to consider enforcing more of our lighting codes around windows. There's a lot of LEDs, a lot of flashing lights that get through, a lot of chasing lights still. That, you know, the difference between a a walkable city is also at night and a lot of these businesses, their facades don't incorporate some of that. Down downward lighting that make the street feel safe. So uh, next slide. So I'd like to include lighting into the next slide, some trees. Next slide. Uh, next slide. So like uh, next slide. Like that chase lighting. You see how it's, you know, what happens is they put up this lighting and it sometimes falls. And sometimes it's chasing. I think something like that we could also codify. Next slide. Uh, clearing the windows. That's part of what other cities do. They don't have as much close windows that are that are um that are open, that are covered with uh signage. It's part of what um uh what with what, you know, studies have shown that that's not really something that people stop and. Want to go into when the when the windows themselves are are covered. You can't see beyond them. Next. Next, this I think this particular street would be the biggest makeover, this particular section of town from one from one to the other. If the if this block was redone, this would be my next target to do a rendering for this. The the actual architecture underneath these buildings is really attractive. It's just not been taken care of. It's been.
It's forbid certain color?
It's we could. Who could? You could encourage certain colors. We're not, you know, in places like uh Nantucket, I think Matt Lance mentioned something last night. They will put a gauge on the size of your shingle and put a color swatch up against it. They're that, you know, dogmatic about how how much. Control they have. I don't think we necessarily need to go there, but some maybe somewhere in between. Next. That section could be a, you know, with awnings and signage and new trees and new trash cans and new sidewalks. That would be a downtown people could be proud of and would want to go visit, even if they didn't have to go there for some particular reason. They're all great businesses, the ones that are open. But the but it just it just lacks the destination that I think Ventnor needs to get it to the next level. I think this little bit of help could encourage businesses to do more. Next slide. Uh, next slide. You can go through them with a a slight pause and then pause at the at the last. You can keep going, Jim.
Wait for the tumbleweed to come.
Yeah, next. Next slide. Because I want to show next slide. Um, you know, at nighttime. Um, there's another one. At nighttime, some of these lighting, uh, you can go back to that. Um, I think there's also some codes that incur that discourage certain amounts of light. And I think we have to be careful of that at night. Some of these are, some of these are 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 uh like there's a that are are pushing light out onto the street. There's almost too much. So if you see this versus uh what the theater has done, the theater is this was a professionally designed lighting plan on the outside. A lot of these are are not that. To put it nicely. Next slide. Next slide. And I'm not picking on any one business. I'm just saying we can raise the bar as a city in general. Next slide. There's another one. This one changes from color to color over time at night. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Keep going. They do a really nice job at that. Uh, actually, you know, Wawa and the and that area has a at at night has a fairly well nicely lit. But if you go down the block a little further, next slide. Uh, at nighttime, uh, that looks fantastic and it's a great um business. But this next few blocks, next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Um, is and we're into I I guess I missed it, but in Dorset Avenue as well, I think I think from in my opinion, the. The the building on the right has set a great standard for that block. I think uh the other businesses um need to sort of follow their lead in some ways. And I think that's how neighborhoods change. And maybe this giving them a little bit, I'm not saying uh we're 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 doing all of it, but maybe we can find the right number. For a major improvement and a minor improvement and incorporate a tax abatement that 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 encourages it. Next slide. Next slide. Next. Next. Next, you can see, I think we also do more uh with our streetscapes. Next. Next. We've got a really diverse group of designs here and and that's not a bad thing. It's just that they I think that um. There's like this is an old slide. They've actually improved quite a bit, but I think uh but I think they don't. None of them all have um uh easy start, trees and trash cans. Next slide. And there are uh and and then we can leave it that there are uh, there's a lot of data out there. We're not on new territory here. This is done in other cities for the same reasons. Um, cities that are in more need than we are. But um, I think we owe it to the uh and that we owe it to the city itself just to make it more of a destination. And the the next um, the next group, the next wave of improvements are are, you know, as we gain more people. They expect to have downtowns that cert that have these kinds of um this kind of care and taken to it. So I I'd ask to just start to hash through an ordinance if you guys would support it.
I'm wondering of. Of the businesses. What what many of them are like, they don't own the building. Does that have any impact at all? I mean, I know the business. The owner would have the benefit of the uh tax abatement or um.
That's their building.
Not only the business.
Yeah, yeah, it's their building and 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 it also improves the their value. Here's some uh, here's some other cities. And you can see that um that even at night, you know, the 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 lighting is to is is shown. There's a little bit more unified. These are some cities and this is a. Uh, uh, up in upstate New York um that have, you know, that have that kind of a. And then I'll just leave it at the at this rendering. So, yeah, it's definitely improvement for the ownership, but it's also improvement for uh the tenant. So I, you know, there may, that's between the ownership and the tenant, I guess, is whether they would.
Right.
They would have.
Still that benefit there.
Yeah.
But it's a win win.
Right. Some long term tenants might want to put some of that, you might want to share in that investment with their ownership. I had a storefront for. Seven years and we did um, you know, we did new signage. We did, you know, new air conditioning. We fitted out the interior. Um, those are things that tenants do and and um, you know, to improve their 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 the salability of their product or service that they're selling. So.
So do you think whether the. If the building is owned by the business or not owned by the business will. Change anything like the success of this or?
I think we have to write it into the ordinance in some ways, right? I mean, I think there's um, I think there's a way to, I think it's the primary um beneficiary is going to be the owner.
I think that's the only way to do it. You you really can't, you can't give money to the tenants.
Yeah.
So the only the only way we can do this is through a tax abatement.
Perfect with benefit the tenant.
Yeah.
Definitely benefit them.
Yeah, if I own a building, I also want to see that that tenant, so um, you know, um. Uh, it's also going to, it's like a a ben- a ben- like a mod remodel like that improves the the quality of the building and potentially the value of the building. But it but it also, I think it 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 sets the the tenant up for a success as well, no matter what the business is. So. Um, I. I think I think I don't think it will happen everywhere, but I'd like the I'd like the capacity to have the option. And I think the more likely thing would be a smaller amount, say five to ten thousand or seven thousand, somewhere in there. That would it would be specifically for awnings, signage and um. Maybe painting, you know, and that would be something that the ownership would also benefit from. But it would be something that you might see a faster uh cycle of improvement happening, you know, and then a larger scale, something that had something like this that has. More more construction, replacement of windows, replacement of uh re- redesign of facades. I mean, you've seen it in Atlantic City, I'm sure. That they, you know, for to, I think we could do it better and I think we can add more success.
Do you think it would be maybe helpful for the smaller improvements if we had renderings or. Like a shopping list of. For for these businesses?
Yeah, well, what you do, what Tim did in his, you know, you almost do form based code for it, which I can't believe I'm even saying that because that's a terrible way to do land use. But it gives you ideas and images.
Right.
Of what you want to see in like that. You would, you don't put colors, you can put colors to it, but you say, look, this is the awning type we're looking at.
Right.
This is the window style we're looking at. This is the facade styles we're looking at. And you give them a couple of examples. And that's how you.
Yeah.
I'm asking for us, I mean, we don't need to talk about this now, but.
It could be part of the the document.
Yeah, but I don't want us telling people what they want to do.
No, and and.
I have no interest in that.
We.
I'm thinking you don't want it all different either, want some symmetry on the block.
No, I think you have to walk the line of.
I'm not a fan of that.
We don't, we don't, we can't, we can't be the, I don't, I don't.
That pink building.
Yeah.
It's it's their building.
Yeah.
Yeah, no one tells you what color to paint your house. I'm not telling somebody what color to paint their building. I'm not a fan of that.
Yeah, and I have to agree with Lance on that. I I don't.
I don't like it, but it's not my call. I don't pay the taxes on that property. You know, it's unless you're going to go in and you're going to do a historic district like Haddonfield where they're going to tell you what size windows, what mullions, what type of window you're going to put in. I have no desire to do that. I've been in front of those boards. I have no desire to make people spend that money. Because it's thousands of extra dollars to put to do new windows in your house.
We don't have to make people spend money. We can tell them, look.
No, no, no. If you create a historic district, like the the way you were, the only way to do what you're asking to do is to create a historic district. And when you do that, you set up, you set up an architectural review board. And those folks are going to tell you what color your house is going to be, like the Nantucket example that that Tim gave. I have no interest in that.
Yeah, they make a of the McDonald's in Nantucket looks like a an old fishing village house. And that there there's real, I don't know that there's any in between space there. I think that what all all I'm saying is that give people a little. A little bit more tool to get them to the next step.
That's what I like.
I do, I do uh professionally, I design uh hundreds of. You know, hundreds, thou- I've done thousands of kitchens. I don't like all of them because some people have personal, you have to, you have to bend to their personal taste. You do, it's the best, I do the best kitchen for that person or the best, make the best choices for that person. But there's, you can't, I don't think we want to be that. I don't think we want to look at, look at the piece pie. I was really didn't like the idea of how that looked, but it's kind of appropriate for like. For, you know, I mean, look at if you go, I think, you know, and and we don't have to get into a a a, you know, a a discussion about who what Ventnor is. Because I think I think that's what the what the business owners need to decide, really. Um, I don't think that we're going to be the arbiters of what. What is good design or good color, because that's different to everybody. It's there's a no, there's no really good answer to that.
But I I like the idea of putting the carrot out there.
Yeah.
The stick can be the window stuff that we don't like right now, like too much stuff in the windows and the chasing lights and all that. That can be the stick. But carrot can be, if you guys are going to spend fifty grand on your your building facade. Then you're going to get a tax abatement over the next five to 10 years, whatever that whatever we decide to be. That I think is the is the carrot to get those folks to do this work.
I think there's probably a place where uh where there's a review of, I think in a lot of these, a lot of these ordinances, they that are existing. They have to submit um uh an estimate and a drawing.
Yeah.
Um, and and in some cases, you know, then some cases, there's palettes that um that that cities offer as a suggestion, you know. And that, and I think you could look at, I um, personally, I would go to like the Historic Society. I would look at what the, you know, we have a, we have some really attractive. Buildings that are still around from the twenties and thirties and forties here that could be, you could bring some of that back. But you could give them guidelines and then and then allow them because, you know, there's certain, you know, there's certain things that the ownership wants to do. If I I I wanted, you know, certain colors on my storefront and my my si- sign design, I, you know, I I was. You know, I was adamant about what I wanted to do, and I'm sure these folks are too. So anyway, I just think there's a way to get uh to encourage businesses to do two sizes, um, a small. You know, signage and and awnings, large, a real improvement on facade that might include things like um window trims, siding. Siding root, you know, there's a lot of.
Dollar threshold.
You're doing a dollar threshold. Yeah, yeah, like twenty, yeah.
You spend ten grand, you can get this much of an abatement. You spend.
Twenty grand, you get this much.
And if you have the higher you go up, the more longer you get.
Right.
Longer and more you get get off.
And it's finite. You don't, we're not giving the hundred percent of it, giving them fifty to seventy five percent.
Allows them to pay that investment off, getting money off their taxes.
Right.
That that's how I would see it going.
All right, well, let's.
You had something sketchy.
I was just going to say with regards to the improve the improvement, it, the idea is, as I read the statute, that it has to improve the value of the building. So you would have the tax assessor involved with that, with what the value was before the improvement and then after the improvement. So it it depends on what they're proposing to do, but it would have to.
It's not just their contractor's dollar amount because they could get somebody to.
No, it's improving the value of the the property itself.
Right.
And given our very low tax rates, you have to make a very substantial improvement to really see an assessment go up that raises your taxes very much.
Right. I I see what you did there.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, if you do, if you spend ten thousand dollars putting up awnings, that's not going to add a lot of. Well, I'm saying, I mean, if you do, if you spend $10,000 putting up awnings, that's not gonna add a lot of taxable value to the property that you can then give an abatement for. I mean, what's the taxes on $10,000?
Right.
Not very much.
Right, so that's better, so it favors, again, favors the business owner.
Correct.
And, and, and I think i- if you get one or two, you start to see the, I think, hopefully something like this grows organically and one business owner talks to another, the VBA would be involved, I'm sure, in promoting it and under- and, and understanding it and pitching it to their.
I think we take that.
Yeah.
On the road.
Yeah.
To them.
Yeah.
One of their, one of their events, we host it somewhere here, we can do it here, whatever they want.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have a spot where we can do it.
The, the other, the other mechanism to possibly look at is to do a special improvement district. And I don't know whether you wanna get into that, Lance, are you familiar with the way Atlantic City's?
Raised that, or I raised that with um, before we had a business association, business, yeah, before the VBA was around, our first year in, I met with probably seven or eight of the, the larger businesses, I don't say larger, some of the historic businesses here. And I raised that and it did not, a couple of businesses were, were, were for it, they understood it. So what a special improvement district is, is what they have in Atlantic City. So it's Sid, Rick.
Right.
He was, he's very familiar with it. Um, what you do is you, you assess the properties that are in that district based on the frontage of their street, their, their property frontage on that street, you, you put a dollar amount on that, on that street frontage and you assess them an amount of money to do improvements and then we do the improvements. We, we can hire folks to clean the streets more detailed, like on the private property even, like right up to the front door. We don't do that here. We allow the, the property owners to do that, but Sid does that in Atlantic City.
Right.
They clean the streets, but their, that money is, is also, it's, it's another tax, basically.
So it's another tax.
Oh yeah, and, and it's, it can be significant. I mean, we wouldn't be anywhere near what Atlantic City charges folks, but um, and we would probably have to splinter off or create a, a maintenance group out of public works, I would think, to do that work.
Probably that's horrible.
We could, we could outsource it, yeah. Yep.
I think it was substantial, but then you had some property owners willing to do it, and some not, it was like, job.
Yeah. But there, this, and the Sid didn't really, soon as, you know, there's a fee for it and it's, they typically go up, like everything else, so.
Yeah, I think we can, I think this is a good.
I, I would agree. I, I like the options and, and work it through a little bit, massage it, come up with some, some levels. And you're right, you can, you know, in the, and I'll use the example of the, the green zone redevelopment plan in Atlantic City. They have facade requirements. When you improve a building, they have requirements. So, and there's the, C R D A reviews the plans, but we don't review the, the architecturals. The city brought in an architect to review them and they do a report saying, yes, you meet that requirement.
Right.
We could do the same thing.
Right.
You'd have to hire the architect to do that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the business, uh, a, a, as a small business owner, you get to be very resourceful. But there, when you have a good year or a bad year, you don't wanna have, the last thing you wanna hear is another tax. But I, I, I think we could do it even in the terms of a micro version, like a few thousand dollars. Like you could have stages where if somebody just needed to get it, wanted to get a new awning or wanted to get a new sign and it helps them out in a small way, that's something that a, a, that you might find a tenant, uh, you know, a si- a, a side arrangement with a tenant and a, and an owner.
I think that might even be, I, I, I get that we could include that in here. I think that might be cumbersome for how little benefit they're gonna get.
That they're gonna get.
So that I think we, we need to keep focusing on having Jim Rattella look for grants for that. And then we can facilitate those grants that way. They're hard, they're hard to get.
Yeah, I just feel like if we can give it a little bit of a, a boost here.
I, I agree. And, and if, for the larger ones, like the Dollar General design there, that would be something that would be worthwhile doing a, a significant.
Yeah.
Lengthy tax abatement.
Won't have, right, it won't have a lot of takers on some of the, the, on, on some of the, the small ones, but you know, but you might get a little bit of improvement and that's what keeps the motivation going from business to business. We have a lot of those round so- uh, awnings, which tend to have a odd look, in my opinion. Again, this is opinion, but those rounded awnings tend to, are, are things that some cities.
They were a big thing in the eighties.
They were a big thing in the eighties, but they, in some of these facade ordinances that I've looked at, they discourage them because they, they, they overpower the facade. You know, the, the rollout awnings or the more, um, or the canvas ones that have signage, that have lettering across the front edge, those tend to be more appealing for people that are, uh, for a walkable space.
You can discourage certain.
You can discourage cer- same thing, yeah. You can discourage certain things and encourage certain things, yeah.
Pink and purple.
Like pink and purple. Trust me, I, I.
I understand that's gonna be a new business going in there.
I thought so, I heard.
Heard of, of Small Batch Bakery.
Oh yeah? Yeah, but it was a bakery. Alright, anyway, I was longer than I expected. I appreciate your time, but we can, if I can get your agreement, we can start to.
Yeah.
Start to flesh something out and circulate.
Dunkin' Donuts came in and they said, can I have to make it orange?
Yeah.
You're like, Maria, that's their colors.
Their colors, yeah.
Down the shore.
And that was the, that was their protocol, prototype. Now all their Dunkin' Donuts look like that.
Yeah, I think it looks great. Same with Burger King. That was their prototype. Yeah.
Yeah.
This could be, this could be easy and it could be benefit.
Mayor, one last piece. I would just encourage you to have the assessor involved in all of that because according to the statute, it really does.
It's based on the assessed value increasing.
You, so he may have some ideas as to what may increase the assessed value of a property that you could incorporate.
Tom said.
I'll start with him.
Including him in the conversation would be critical.
Say again?
Your comments are concerning.
Yeah, well, I, I have looped Bill in on this already, so he's looking at this.
No, but your comment in regards to, it has to be of substance.
For it to be worthwhile to the owner, I think so.
Then, will, will make a big difference in the look of something, but.
That's why I'm saying we have to find another way to help the smaller improvements, because I don't think they're gonna get any benefit out of this. It has to be significant enough to get a tax, you know, if you're getting 50 bucks a year off your taxes, that's not worth you spending that much money.
Right.
Right. It's gotta be a significant.
You're saying, there, there, there might, there's some other way to, to get those things.
Yep.
All right, all right, let's keep it going.
Yeah.
Um, are we gonna, um, do we involve the public in that or do we wanna just keep moving if anybody?
Keep moving up. So the next one is the revocable license. So Maria, you had a question today, what if they did a hedgerow? It is behind the sidewalk. So it's, it's, it's city right-of-way, but we did it over here for the corner of Cambridge where they built the pool. And we allowed them to do a, a four-foot high fence with vegetation on top. We capped it at six feet. That would be my recommendation here too. Be just like a fence there.
It's a corner.
It's a corner, yeah. It's actually behind one of the facades you had here. It's behind uh, fishing, it's not fishing whistle anymore. It's, they changed it, the Heaney wine bar.
Way fine, yeah.
It's different now.
Yeah, it's a, it's a bay buzz.
Bay buzz. So it's the housing behind that. I, I believe that's where it is, right?
Okay.
It's Dudley there.
Yeah, that second developed, how it developed lot.
So I think they're putting a pool back there and they're trying to cover it in, so if we need the right-of-way, we can only, it's why it's a revocable license. If we ever need it, we can come back in and take it. So Ed recommended it. It didn't create any issues for him, so we would move it on to, as a, as a resolution, next meeting. If you guys are okay with that.
Yeah. Um, so that is the, the two discussion items. Um, moving, moving, moving forward.
Public portion.
We have uh, sorry.
Public portion.
Public portion. Sorry, I'm gonna get caught back up.
One guy leave.
Yep.
Boredom to death.
Discussion items. So yeah, we had, I'd already briefed on, uh, like, described this. Uh, anybody in the Zoom platform that would like to speak about anything that we've uh, uh, discussed uh, so far? Um, uh, motion to open the public portion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Mr. Langraff?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes.
Anybody in Zoom who wishes to question or comment on any of the items or resolutions that have been discussed so far? Please make yourself known in either in the chat feature or by raising your hand and you'll be recognized. Nope.
No. Thank you. A motion to close public portion of the workshop meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to call to order the regular portion of our meeting this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Um, roll call, Lisa?
Mr. Langraff?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, right. Um, I have a motion to approve minutes A through G, April 24th, uh, May 8th, regular, May 22nd, regular, May 22nd, uh, executive, uh, June 30th, special and July 10th, regular and executive approval of those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
My, my roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langraff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Uh, we have no ordinance introductions, no public hearing, uh, no ordinance adoption. Uh, I have a motion to adopt resolutions 2025 dash 239 through 2025 dash 264 by consent.
Make that motion.
Second.
My roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langraff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Amy, can I have uh, bills and payroll, please?
Payables for this period is $4,185,237.03.
Really?
Rolls for this period is $1,579,940 and for you Lance, zero cents.
There we go. First time in 10 years, we've had a, had a zero cent bill.
Yep.
We'll happily make that motion to approve those bills and payroll.
I have a, I have a second.
Second.
I have a roll call.
Commissioner Langraff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, congratulations.
Now the goal is to get both of them. Almost had a double.
Uh, we have no announcements, the safety reports, uh, commissioner, uh, comments or reports. Commissioner Mento, do you have any um?
I have a whole list of them. They're in the.
Business as usual in revenue and finance, we are embarking on a new payroll system, so Amy's um, in the throes of that right now, correct? Boy's a little scary. Um, as far as events, I'll just list a few um, that are coming up. Um, of course, we have the concerts every Wednesday and Saturday. We got rained out um, Wednesday, we did get to hear the band was great for about maybe 40 minutes um, and lightning, so that was tough. Um, we have the farmer's market that is, that is really handled by a committee of wonderful people. That's every Friday at 8:30 to about 12, I believe.
Yes.
Um, August 15th is the lifeguard, that we, we'll pass, are we passed?
Or night.
Tomorrow night.
Or night. The galleys.
15th, yep, gally races at Suffolk Avenue at headquarters. We have movie night coming up on August 25th at Ski Beach. And then on August 30th, we have a goodbye to summer concert um, at Ski Beach. It's the Party Wave Band Band ending the summer. And um, that's in addition to in between the Wednesday and Saturday concerts. Um, August 16th, August 23rd. And uh, that's the Saturdays and August 20th and August 27th is Wednesdays. That's everything. For the mess, it's a lot to read all for.
Yeah.
People to get, but go to our website, go to the Venter Special Events website, you'll, you'll find everything I just said. Or the city's webpage also.
All my stuff sitting down on my desk. I left it on the old agenda, so, but just from memory, um, we're out to design for some new infrastructure projects. One, we got a grant up to $2 million in design costs for multiple different projects. So we've added some sewer lines, some waterline, uh, design work to that as well as, I think the water tower's on that as well. Um, to try and get that, the renovation of those things designed uh, for free. Um, that puts us in line for funding for um, those items under grants and, and low interest loans. Uh, speaking of that, we will.
Yes, we're actually like, ready to go out to bid on the water tower project and uh, gonna close on the financing through the I-Bank right in the near future.
Good, thank you. Also with that is the uh, lead service line, you'll start to see some things coming up in the next couple of weeks, both at our events and online. Um, public information as part of the funding we're gonna get and the design help we got through um, a technical assistance program, we have to have a lot of public output. Um, public input, public output, but, so we're gonna have um, tents set up at all of our events. We're going to have a public hearing probably sometime in September on a Saturday um, over at the school, so we can have a lot of people there. Um, information set up where it'll talk about the project, how it's being funded and how it's gonna be constructed, so. Um, moving forward with that, you may have seen Margate move theirs forward a little bit. They're not getting the same funding we are, so we have a little bit of heavier lift with our public output. Um, that's kind of it. Winding down the summer.
Yeah.
You know, we, we had hoped to have this room a little bit redone, the carpeting this summer, but with the summertime, it's, our guys are just too busy. So we're gonna probably do that over the winter where that carpet, that red or orange, what I think it was red, but now it's orange. Uh, that's gonna be replaced. Um, do some cleanup in here a little bit. Curtains, I think we're gonna take down and just leave the blinds. We did have an issue in here. If you smell a little dampness in here, we had a HVAC system leak at that back wall. Amy was, were involved in that today. Her room got a little damp, but uh, it's fixed, so we just have to do the repairs now.
Great.
And some other things, but they're, I'll, I'll shoot an email to everyone just so you can see what they are.
Great, great. Uh, I, um, I, I talked enough, um, but I will just put a couple uh, thank yous um, out. Uh, again, um, uh, to Shelley and her, uh, the, the, the beautification committee, uh, Barbara Cassell also. She was part of that, um, that kinda helped me push this facade thing your way. And I also wanna, uh, there's plenty of summer left. Um, our beach patrol had a fantastic, I don't think we've met since then, but the, the Bill Howard South Jersey lifeguard championships at home. Um, they're having a great summer. Um, you know, the, the, uh, that's why we're, I mean, that's a lot of reasons why we're here, you know, the beaches have just been fantastic this summer. That's been a great, been a great season and um, uh, so look, there's still plenty of August and September is the, one of the best months here. So and um, at that, I will say uh.
I'm gonna interrupt you.
Yeah.
You, you mentioned the Howards, but you didn't mention that Venter's women won that.
That's, that's why I meant to mention.
South Jersey championship.
Our South Jersey championship, we had uh, doubles row, Sam Keough and Charlotte Thomas, uh, in the third place, the swim, Ryan uh, Lowry, uh, fifth place, and the singles row, Sam Keough in first place, but all of them, um, you know, it's nice to see uh, that particular event, that local event uh, at our home beach and, and they also ran it in some of the worst weather. Uh, you were, you might have been there, but yeah, yeah, those are the kinds of days that they make you test to be a lifeguard and they, you know, and there are some, some of those boats were launched in the air over some of the rough surf and the very low, it was a really, really tough day. And uh, home, home field advantage to them and, and, and to Megan Holland and uh, and, and our chief for putting something like that on and the way they had it rotated and the way they made, worked through it, everybody was very proud um, of that.
Police work, you don't have to talk about it.
The what?
Today's story.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, well, there's always uh, there's, there's, there's life out there in the beach, so uh, um, yeah, there's always, uh, the be- actually, I took some guests out on the pier when the spots were running and you know, they were just literally one over the other, hand over fist, pulling spots and, and uh, sand sharks out of the, um, off the, off the pier. It's really an active that night, uh, the last few weeks, um, but that's all I had.
I'm gonna add one more thing and that is to congratulate Nicole Curio, cause her family also had an outstanding season. Uh, but unfortunately not for the Venter Beach Patrol yet, for the upper township Beach Patrol. And her 16-year-old son, uh, was a very successful swimmer. Uh, actually took fourth place in the South Jerseys, but he won some of the other races. Um, and I'm pushing Nicole to get him here next year.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, shared service.
Shared service, nothing, we want a hundred percent.
Just for the season. Rick, uh, do you have a comment?
I, I just wanna say one thing. I wanna remind everyone, we hit, we entered into a great partnership with our local Girl Scouts troop. They stepped up, they stepped to use it, they stepped up using their cookie revenue money to uh, help landscape of the lifeguard boat out by the recreation field. They're looking for additional projects. We're gonna support them with um, to do. They, they, they're talking to us about a new flagpole there, maybe an evergreen tree to provide landscaping. The lifeguard boat, we did uh, add uh, drip lines into it so it can be irrigated. And they've also uh, guilted the Boy Scouts into stepping up now. The Boy Scouts have knocked on the door. They're looking to help us refurbish benches and refurbish and plant some of the um, other planters that are there. So the girls had a, a great time and they're very excited to get their hands in the dirt and work with us and it was outstanding effort. And the, the most resonating comment they meant was that the uh, uh, our workers, our cops, our firemen, our public works people, our governing body bought a ton of uh, girl. bought a ton of, uh, Girl Scout cookies and, um, they put that money right back into the, yeah, right back into the community to help us. So that was an outstanding effort and now it's starting to steamroll into other, uh, micro projects. So we, uh, really appreciate them. And these girls were little.
Yeah.
They're little kids, seven, eight. The oldest one I think was nine. So, uh, but they're into community service. And now we're going to see some competition between them and the boy scouts to do some stuff, projects out there.
Literally on the Girl Scouts in the form of Thin Mints.
Yeah. 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 But I, I thought it was cute that they wanted to put their money back right into the community.
Yeah. I don't, and this might not, I'm not casting any shade on the fire department because you guys keep a, uh, you're squared away there. But I did notice that the mailbox that's used for, um, uh, retired flags. Maybe you could get them to repaint that. I mean, that, I don't know. It's up to you.
Roger geared up for the summer with the, the guy that was supposed to do it.
Okay.
That's one of our ten.
We'll help with that. We have paint and we could maybe prime it first and get it ready. And, and, uh, the one thing the, uh, boy scouts were considering was helping paint fire hydrants, paint the caps and redo hydrants. So that's something, you know, we, we could talk to them about, but.
As long as the chief approves the colors.
Yeah.
Do you see the one at, um, it's where they do the nine 11 ceremony. It's red, white and blue. It is, it is. Yeah. Right. I know. Yep.
Yeah. Well, it's great. That's a really, it was a really great, I think, and it also, it happened very quickly. It was like one or two emails. Everybody jumped on it. I appreciate what you did to get them, get them, uh, started there. And, and it was, they really found the need and, and it looks great.
It does. Thanks, Rick.
Yeah. Maybe that, maybe focus on that park. There's other things I'm sure. Um, uh, can I have a motion, any, uh, public comment on the Zoom platform? I have a motion to, I get, we are, we're in, we're in public comment, correct?
Yeah.
That was commissioner comment. So motion to close commissioner comments.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Langraff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Uh, can I motion to open public comment?
So moved.
I have a second. Roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Langraff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. So anyone in the, on the Zoom platform, uh, that would like to make a comment on anything Ventnor City related. Um, you would have, if you keep your, uh, comments to three minutes if possible.
Anybody on Zoom wish to make any comments on any items? Please make yourself known by raising your hand or in the chat feature and you'll be recognized.
Please state your name and address. Five, four, three.
Nope. Okay.
Hearing none. May I have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Langraff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Um, at this time we have an executive session. If you could, uh, read the prologue, please. And Jim, I would ask you to close the Zoom session for executive session after the prologue.
New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits the discussion of certain matters within executive session. As an exception to certain provisions of said law, the Ventnor City Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualify as exceptions in executive session. No action binding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken within executive session. And the discussion conducted in closed session will be disclosed to the public when legally permitted and when the public interest will no longer be served by keeping such matters confidential. Admit?
Okay. All right. Um, and during executive session, we discussed a personnel matter, um, with regards to the city filing involuntary disability. Retirement application as an accidental disability for an individual firefighter, Daniel Carew. Um, so before you, um, commissioners, there's a resolution authorizing the city administration to process an individual, an involuntary, excuse me, disability and an involuntary accidental disability retirement application for firefighter, Daniel Carew. So if there's a motion.
Motion. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as described?
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, may I roll call?
Commissioner Langraff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Our last item on the agenda is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Lisa, may I have a roll call?
Commissioner Langraff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.